Good evening, this is the Board of Selectmen's Remote Meeting of October 19th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Is there anybody recording the meeting besides Lake Cam? Agenda number one, in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the October 19th, 2020 public meeting, the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, review this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to review at a later date at www.lakecom.tv. As preliminary matter, this Rich LaCamera, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, please permit me to confirm all members and staff persons anticipated on the agenda. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Leah Fabian.
Present.
Brian Day.
Present.
And Tracy Craig McGee, Executive Assistant.
Present.
And I'll introduce the other people that are going to be on the agenda as we get to them. This is the open meeting of the Board of Selectmen and is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor's Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2014, due to the state of emergency in the Commonwealth to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Now, to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by Commonwealth to spend public gatherings, as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement for the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings and publicly accessible physical location where the raw members of public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order in which you can find posted with agenda materials at this meeting allows public bodies to quickly, excuse me, entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable access is afforded to the public can follow along with the deliberation of this meeting. Okay. All right, first item on the agenda is announcements. Early voting for the presidential election will take place at the Lakeville Townhouse, 2 Precinct Street, the intersection of 105 and 18, from Saturday, October 17th, till noon through Friday, October 30th. Please visit the town's homepage, www.lakefillma.org, under News for all the information needed regarding this, including the hours of early voting. The Council of Aging is holding an annual coat drive beginning October 13th through November 13th. Coats can be any size, residents can drop off their clean, new, or used, gently worn coats at the Lakeville Police Station Lobby, the Lakeville Police Station Lobby, the Lakeville Library, and the Lakeville Senior Center. Coats will be donated to the citizens, to the citizens for those that are in need. The Board of Selectmen discussed the issue of trick or treating for Halloween at their meeting on October 7th. The Board of Health Department agrees that the state's recommendation to celebrate Halloween outside, please wear a mask, limit interaction with people that are giving out candy, and do not attend or host an indoor parties. The complete letter of recommendation from the Board of Health can be found on the town's website in the Facebook page. As everybody knows, you can see that the cases are rising again, and it's extremely important that everybody continue wearing their masks and their social distancing. Okay, next on the agenda is discuss the appointment of Angela Chandler as interim Treasurer Collector and vote to sign the contract. Treasurer Collector is, our current Treasurer Collector Debbie Kenny is retiring on November 1st, and we have to appoint an interim Treasurer Collector pending the legislation by the Senate and the House, which hasn't been addressed yet, so we don't know how long this interim Treasurer Collector's position, but my guess is that between that and looking for new Treasurer Collector, it'll probably take at least two to four months. So Brian, would you want to talk about the process that we followed?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So a few weeks ago, we had a search committee that was formed that was made up of the town accountants, our HR Director, our current Treasurer Collector, and myself. We went through a number of resumes that came in from the job posting. It was nice to actually see quite a few come in and quite a few good candidates. We all individually reviewed those candidates and came up with what we called our first round of interviewees. So I believe it was back on October 1st or so, we had the first round of interviews take place with three candidates. After those interviews took place, we all individually kind of reviewed the performance of those candidate interviews and individually all agreed that Ms. Chandler, who is with us here tonight, was the standout performer. And on October 8th, we invited her for an in-person interview to kind of follow up. A little less structured than the first one, the first round, every interviewee got the same questions. Our second one was much more informal conversational to get to know Ms. Chandler a bit more. And it's with our pleasure to recommend to the board here tonight that Ms. Chandler be our interim Treasurer Collector. She's got over 20 years of experience in municipal finance and various roles. She's got a lot of experience in the systems that the town of Lakeville is already using today and/or looking to implement. And we think that she's got a lot to bring to the table for us until we figure out the permanent appointed position in the future.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Angela Chandler as the interim Treasurer Collector.
I'll make that motion, Rich, and to, we have to say to sign the contract or...
Well, we have to first appoint her, then we'll sign the contract.
Okay, so I make the motion that we appoint Angela Chandler to serve as interim Treasurer Tax Collector.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
I just want to thank Brian and Clarinda, our HR person, and everyone on the committee, Debbie too, for all their work and their time in this super important position. Thank you, everyone.
All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. We have a contract that Angela has provided to us, and the contract, I forget, I don't know what the date is here, but whatever. And that she, I believe, help me out, Brian, is going to work at least two to three days a week, something like that, Angela?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, I believe it goes as far as to stipulate at a minimum of 16 hours per week as possible, given Town Hall's current restrictions.
Okay. So entertain a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Angela, you have anything to say? Are you all set with it?
I'm all set with it. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Oh, well, we're glad to have you. We appreciate that. All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. So, welcome Angela. We look forward to you working with the town and over probably at least a few months anyways. And we have some great people in the Treasurer's Office, and I know you'd be happy working in that office. And so also, you'll be reporting to the Town Accountant, Todd Hassett, I believe you know. And because the Town Administrator, we need a new Town Administrator, that we thought that that was the best approach, you know, in the short term. So if you get in touch with Todd, I know, I think you already talked about a few dates, so.
We have, yep. Actually, I'll be in the office this Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to remind the board that Angela needs to be sworn in before, you know, anything happens. So I already have the form typed, so if you guys could come in tomorrow and sign the appointment form, then she could make an appointment with the town clerk to come in either Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday.
Well, she could probably do it Thursday, which she doesn't have to make a special trip down, so.
Okay.
We'll make the arrangement with the town clerk, you know, to do that, so.
Yep, I'll be by to sign tomorrow.
We're going to have a lot of things to sign tomorrow, so.
Yeah.
We're sending an email to the board for things that we need to sign, so. Okay, anything else, Brian or Angela?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you coming on, so people could see who you are, because I know the Treasurer Collector's Office will be dealing with the public, so we wanted to make sure people knew who you were.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Angela. Looking forward to seeing you.
All right, what do we got here? We got 6:41. Let's see. We got a 6:45 appointment, so we can't go past that. Well, I don't think there's anything too quick here.
Number 13 isn't lengthy, Rich, and I think he is with us.
Yeah, but Nancy's with us too, and I don't know if Nancy, that's fine, we can do that. Okay, we'll skip to number 13, which is review and vote to sign the contract with SERPAD to execute the MVP Action Grant for the ABC Complex and create the plan. If the Board recalls, we received a $93,000 grant, you know, from the state to work on this project, and now we have to sign the contract with SERPAD so they can do the plan. So entertain a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy, you all set?
I'm all set. I just suppose here to answer any questions if you have any, but I think I sent all the information in.
All right, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. Great job, everybody.
Yay. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Great job.
Do we need to do anything formal to appoint the point person, or has that already been taken care of? I think there was a mention of doing so in the contract somewhere.
When I threw you, Mr. Chairman, when I asked SERPAD about that, they said they had already talked to Rich. I mean, if you want to formally appoint me, I am the the point person on the grant.
Sign with me. I just didn't know if there was a formality we had to go through or not.
Well, Nancy's our appointed person to the APC complex anyways.
Right, that's what SERPAD said, so I should be all set.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, today, we took a vote, right? Yep, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Good night.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, we just got to wait about...
Few seconds?
Half a minute, I saw, somewhere in there. Okay, next, next on the agenda is Earth Removal Hearing for 210 Kenneth Wells Drive. Michael Barelli, is that how I spell it?
Hi folks, good evening.
How you doing?
Good, good.
I still have to wait a little bit. It's not 6:45, sorry. You have to follow the procedure. Okay, here we go. Okay, notice of hearing pursuant to Chapter 5 of the Bylaws and the Regulations of the Town of Lakeville, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the application of Michael Barelli of Mettan, Mettan?
Yes.
Mettan. Marine Restoration Inc.
Yes.
Slash RH Marine Group LLC for a permit to remove earth materials from the property located at 210 Kenneth Wells Drive, Lakeville, Mass. On Monday, October 19th, 2020 at 6:45. In accordance with the Governor's order, I have to read this again, in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the October 19th public meeting with the Board of Selectmen shall be held remotely and physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Anybody wishing to comment on this proposed Earth removal permit can do so by viewing the meeting in progress at facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to review this meeting. This meeting will also be recorded and available to review at a later date at www.lakecom.tv. And also, we have chat on here on the Facebook, so if there's anybody out there in the public that has any comments, please send us a message. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, I.
Excuse me, thank you. All right, I need, we need to, is there anybody, Mike, beside yourself that is going to be testifying at this hearing?
Yeah, Matt from Outback Engineering is on with us. If you guys have any questions specific about the plot plan that I can't answer, I figure he'll help you.
All right, so that you have to be sworn in, okay? I swear to tell the truth, the host truth, I believe in you, God.
I do.
I do.
I do. Okay. Okay, any questions or comments need to be directed through the chair first? And I guess that's about it. So, Matt, I guess you're going to present the plan?
Sure. What the applicants looking to do is remove some earth material in the back rear of the property. Approximately 4,500 cubic yards of material is going to be removed from the site to create an area to expand the outdoor storage space for the facility for molds and boats' storage. And then they're going to put down some gravel, just have a gravel surface out there. Everything's going to be graded to drain towards the existing detention basin, which is in the northern, north portion of the property. And then we'll install some some pine trees along the property line just to create a break.
Okay. We do have a plan. And Matt, I want to make sure, I believe this plan shows the elevations and what's going to be removed?
Correct.
Okay, so after the removal, you will provide a plan that shows the elevations of...
An ASBIL plan.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Okay, does any of the members have a question on the on the Earth Removal Permit?
You asked mine. I was going to ask if we were going to get an ASBIL after the fact, just that we've got proper calculations. Looks like you're pretty far away from any residential areas. Is the clearing going to be done just during normal business hours? I saw that you want to get this done as quick as possible. What are your thoughts there?
It'll be normal business hours.
We're going to, we're going to discuss, Brian, we're going to discuss the conditions of the permit. And in the conditions of the permit, we'll be discussing the hours and so forth, so.
Okay.
Anybody else have any further comments on the, for the hearing?
None for me, Rich. Just a chair, sorry.
It's okay. It's okay, Leah, Vice Chair. Brian, you still there?
I froze. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
I can hear you.
All right, I might drop and come right back, but I'm here.
Okay, so I will make a motion. Did he leave?
No.
No, I'm still listening.
Okay, I will, somebody make a motion to close the hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Okay.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. All right, so now we need to talk about the permit itself and the conditions, you know, of the permit. this is pretty standard stuff that we do. I just want to, Matt, you're probably familiar with it anyways. The removal of loom will stay on the property if there's any on the property, Matt?
Yeah, that's the anticipated, that we'll just re-stock, temporarily stock the loom on site, and then when the, when the all the grading's done, re-spread it out and loom and seed.
Because if you remove the loom, as you know, you got to come back to us.
Right.
To remove the loom from the property.
Yeah, we had anticipated leaving the loom on site temporarily and then let it spread it out.
All righty.
Definitely.
So how long do you think this is going to take?
Couple of weeks.
Okay, so if we have the permit through November 30th, then that would be fine?
I will check with the contractor. You think that should be all right, right, Matt?
We can make it longer if you want, you know, if that's...
If you could do it to the end of the year, just to give them some extra time.
That's fine. I mean, it can always be changed, but you don't want to have to come back to us, so.
I almost don't want to tell the excavator they has until the end of the year.
Okay, why don't we make it March 31st?
Sure, thank you.
That way, everybody would be safe.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, what else we got here? I don't think we have to worry about access, because you're going to be coming out on Kenneth Wells Drive and either going down Route 18 or 79. Normal stuff, because the trucks leaving the site will obey the posted speed limits and safety signs, etc., and weight restrictions, so that'll be in the permit as well, just so you know.
All right.
I don't think, based upon the number of trucks that are becoming out of there, would involve police detail?
No, not based on our neighbors.
Okay, one of the things, Matt, are they going to provide us a the slips from the truckers, or are they going to, you're going to provide the ASBIL plans for us to calculate the fee?
We'll probably just do it off the ASBIL.
Okay, that's fine. That's better anyways. Okay, no removal. We permitted on Saturdays, Sundays, or any holidays. And only between the hours of 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM on any other day. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
Then they talk about equipment. No, no, no equipment operations, removal, as we've been on Saturdays, Sundays, holidays, equipment operation and removal, and shall be permitted only between the hours of 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM on other days. You're not going to be screening any materials, I don't think? I don't think it's necessary, but standard, no blasting or crushing of material shall be placed on site without the original, the written approval of the Board. I don't think that's going to be a problem.
No.
Materials such as stump, street trunks, and branches from clearing and grubbing shall be moved from the site. I don't know if there's any of that, Matt?
Yeah, they're taking it actually. The guys who are removing the soil are taking the stumps.
Okay, so we need that in the permit. All large boulders not designated for reuse on the site shall be buried or removed. I don't know if that applies either.
No, a lot of dirt.
Probably won't. It's pretty granular material. I don't anticipate many boulders.
Slopes shall not be steeper than three to one, and you know that, Matt, unless otherwise on the plan, record, recorded.
Yeah, we anticipate a four to one slope, so hopefully we won't be much steeper than that.
No excavation shall extend below vertical limits stipulated in the plan of record without the approval of the Board. Unsuitable earth materials encountered below the approved excavation limits are reported to the Building Commission, or they report the removal of the unsuitable materials should be allowed upon approval of the Building Committee, Building Commissioner. Okay, I think that's about it. So does anybody have any problems with any of those conditions, including the board members?
I don't, and it looks like there's still no comments on Facebook as of 6:53, so.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the permit subject to the proposed conditions meant by the, provided by the Board.
So moved.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On number 21, it speaks about natural heritage. Is this property in natural heritage?
No, no, it is not.
Okay, thanks, Matt. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, I.
Oh. There's a fee. $200 fee. And 15 cents a yacht, okay?
Okay.
All right, just so you know that.
All right.
Okay, I would say this is probably going to take us two or three days to get this together, because once again, the Board has to sign it, so by the end of the week, okay with you, Mike and Matt?
Awesome. Thank you, thank you, Lord.
Thank you very much.
You're all set. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Welcome.
Good night. Okay, next on the agenda is meet with Tom O'Brien from Plymouth County Treasurer to discuss CARES Act. Well, thanks for coming on there, Tom. We appreciate your time. Tom is the Treasurer of Plymouth County. And I actually was on a call this afternoon with Tom, with the other towns and discussing, they were giving us an update on where we are as far as the CARES money is concerned. Tom, maybe you want to just give a brief update about that, so that the Board knows, you know, where we are.
No, thank you very much, and the setting behind me might look familiar, because it's the same setting we had this afternoon. And I'm happy to be here with the Board of Selectmen in Lakeville. Before I begin, I just want to offer a special thanks to Deb Kenny for her service to the Town of Lakeville as a Treasurer. I had the pleasure of working with her over the last 14 years, and she's been a pleasure to work with, and I know the town will miss her, and I was going to take a chance to say welcome to Angela and give her my information, but if the Board could pass that on to her, if she has any questions, I want to be available to help any way that I can. I was invited to talk about the CARES Act, as you know. That was passed at the end of March, March 27th, by the Legislature. Plymouth County had the opportunity, because the population in Plymouth County is greater than 500,000, to take a portion of the monies designated for the Plymouth County region. And so please understand, the monies that the county applied for is 45% of the monies available for this area. So the state 5% of the monies available for this area, that amounted to little more than $90 million, which we have applied for, and I encourage anyone who wants to follow along with how this is going and the monies that are being disseminated, please go to plymouthcountycares.com. It is a dedicated website to the administration of these funds, and you can see as towns apply for money, you can check our frequently asked questions, and you can certainly follow along with what we're doing. We're pretty proud of the fact we were the first dedicated website that we're aware of in the country. Others have started to follow suit. As the Chairman of the County Commissioners is often pleased to announce, we're getting calls from other states asking how we're administering our program, because they've been impressed with how it's going and the system that we've set up. As the Chairman mentioned, he was on a call this afternoon. The County Commissioners have voted to release more of the monies available to the communities. So today, another $201,176.64 was allotted to the cap for the Town of Lakeville. So that brings your total amount released, or available, if you will, to $1,661,008. uh, to one million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and forty-two cents. Now, please understand, right now, the federal law, and this is all governed by federal law, the US Treasury and the Office of Inspector General under the US Treasury, has said these monies have to be spent by December thirtieth. Now, we recognize that that is largely unreasonable, uh, but it is currently the law. The commissioners wrote a letter to our federal delegation, asking them to extend that deadline, uh, because we know that that's largely impractical. We know that this pandemic is resurging a bit, and that costs will continue to go beyond December thirtieth. But right now, we are required to follow the law, uh, and we have announced to our team, the monies available to each of the twenty-seven communities, uh, so that you can begin to apply for those resources. To date, uh, Lakeville has received twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. You have another application in already under current review for forty thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, we know that towns are ramping up their submissions to us. We've seen more over the last week, predominantly because of schools. What we're seeing in many communities is the fact that they were hoping to go hybrid. And uh, as they started to do that, a number of them, either because of cases of coronavirus or uh, because of logistics, have had to step back and return to remote learning, not an easy choice. Uh, but as they've had to do that, that comes with cost, uh, and so we're seeing increased submissions predominantly, uh, school-related costs, uh, and we expect that to continue. Uh, we do expect that our communities will use most of these resources, uh, not necessarily all of them. A reminder to the, to the board, and Lakeville's uh, first submission was excellent. A reminder to the board that there are some governing rules. Uh, one, uh, they have to be spent between March first and December thirty, thirtieth, not even the thirty-first, the thirtieth. Uh, two, they can't have been in a budget, uh, they say the recent budget as of March twenty-seventh. Uh, but if a town was budgeting it or planning on it, and it was something they were going to do anyway, then it wouldn't be eligible. And then three, and this is the most important, is it has to be COVID-related. It has to be as a result of the pandemic. It has to be COVID-specific, uh, and therefore uh, would be part of an eligible submission. Uh, we have a fairly rigorous process set up. A submission comes in through the Plymouth County CARES website. It goes directly to a CPA firm, uh, that we've retained for the purposes of initial review pursuant to the federal guidelines. After that review, it comes up to our office, to our comptroller for a second round of review. Third, it comes to my desk, uh, for the final sign-off by my office. I'm serving as the grant administrator under the federal law. And then it goes to the commissioners for signature. So we have a very rigorous process. The advantage to that, to you folks, is that we relieve all of those audit review burdens that you have. Uh, those now have been assumed by Plymouth County, we're the primary recipient. Uh, let me give you an example of that benefit to you, which you may not know, or, or it doesn't make sense intuitively. Um, the federal government's original guidelines, and by the way, the federal government has changed the guidelines five times. So we're, we're constantly dealing with a moving goalpost. For you uh, football fans, it gets difficult for us, cause they keep changing the rules, uh, but we're doing our best to be flexible. And so as they're changing their guidelines, uh, we're trying to adjust accordingly, uh, and make sure that we can uh, follow along with those guidelines and uh, make sure that we're following the rules. But the original guidelines required a categorization into six categories. Uh, and I know the fire chief and others are familiar with the categories, and when you submit, you have to identify where you think those belong to us. About four weeks ago, the federal government and the Office of Inspector General at the US Treasury said, yeah, we want those subdivided into seventeen additional categories. Now, the good news for you in Lakeville and the other twenty-six communities in Plymouth County, is our CPA firm had already categorized those into an Excel spreadsheet. And so we spent a number of days doing that for you. So your original submission has already been recategorized by us to meet the federal guidelines. What we've heard from others in county, in towns outside of Plymouth County or in other states, is that created a huge administrative nightmare for their team to have to re-categorize every single expenditure, every invoice into one of these seventeen subsets. Uh, so we like to think that it saved our towns hundreds of hours of administrative work, uh, because we took that on. Uh, so any audit work would be done initially through the county. We have files on each of our twenty-seven communities. We're documenting everything that you folks are submitting, which we expect saves a burden on you folks in the future, because the federal government, rightfully so, will be auditing each of these expenditures to make sure it was spent as it was required to be spent pursuant to the CARES Act. So we feel that we have a great program in place. We believe we've relieved an administrative burden from you folks. Uh, we know sometimes our submission form uh, is, is not, is not as easy as some would like, uh, but it's outlined by the CARES Act, and it's in order for us to comply uh, with the federal law. So um, we are, we are proceeding along as, as best we can. Uh, we look forward to uh, working with each of our communities. Uh, we have uh, have received uh, very good kudos. I know the chair heard some uh, pleasant comments, a little teasing back and forth, but some uh, compliments to the CARES program uh, through Plymouth County. I always try to make myself available. I know you folks were asking me to come to a meeting. I know there were some scheduling issues, but I will try to make myself available at any point in time. You can feel free to call me at the office. I will publicly give out my direct line, five zero eight, eight three zero, nine one three zero, uh, because we want people to get as much information as we can. As the chair knows, the commissioners hold every two or three weeks a meeting with the administrators, uh, and talk about where we are and where we stand with the program. So uh, that's a, a lengthy highlight. Uh, I guess it took me about seven or eight minutes, not too bad for me. Uh, those that know me for a while, I, I certainly enjoy the chance to talk about things that I'm involved with. So uh, at that point, Mister Chair, unless there's more you want me to elaborate on, uh, that'll serve as a summary for now.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. Um, I guess, as being on the meeting today, you know, there seems to be um, some confusion as to certain things that would be reimbursed, and I know the town administrator from Hall brought up two or three things, you know, that rumors about this and rumors about that, and, you know, uh, I didn't wanna bring it up, you know, at the meeting, but um, like, one town supposedly has submitted for an ambulance. Is that true, Tom?
So as we said in the meeting, uh, every town is different. And it's important that everyone know, something submitted by one town might be ineligible in another town. And conversely, something ineligible in a town might be eligible in another town. That's because the rules are very clear. It has to be need-based, it has to be unbudgeted, and it has to meet certain guidelines. So we've had communities submit for item X, and they bought it in February. So it's not eligible for that town. Another town bought it in June, therefore it would be eligible. Uh, other examples, uh, we've had items uh, that a community uh, found uh, that they needed, uh, that they had already put into their budget, and therefore it was not eligible. Uh, and another community didn't have it in their budget. It was something that they needed. Uh, it was determined by their different committees that it was needed, and it was eligible. So it is frustrating uh, for us to explain that every town is unique. It needs to be needs-based, based on those categories and those rules. Uh, to answer the question about, there was a question earlier today about a fire engine. There have been no fire engine, so we need to make that clear. However, uh, one community did submit for an ambulance. They have a mobile integrated health unit. Uh, and that unit has dedicated nursing staff. Uh, they have identified that vehicle as COVID-related only. They have a logbook and will only use that vehicle for COVID runs. Uh, and so with the documentation they were able to provide, uh, with the fact that they made a case that that ambulance uh, was COVID-only, uh, and that they could purchase it in the timeframe, uh, and that it would be used only for COVID runs, nothing else. Uh, and they have a logbook which we are inspecting. Uh, they were eligible for reimbursement. We had another town that, that wanted another ambulance, but they needed it to supplement their regular runs. That would not be eligible. So you can see very quickly how something eligible in one community isn't necessarily eligible in another.
So what do they do with that ambulance after the COVID nineteen is over?
So that's, that is one of the uh, descriptions of the program. If you use it for COVID-related purposes until December thirtieth, at the end of that, uh, it remains an asset of the community, but it has to be used for COVID-related purposes. Now, if they extend the timeline, and we talked about that a little bit, past December thirtieth, let's say to March thirty-first, which we're hoping they do, that ambulance can only be used for COVID purposes until March thirty-first. So the law is very clear, very specific, uh, and you need to make a compelling case. I can tell you, we have rejected more vehicles than have been approved, but there have been some that have been approved. And just to let you know, we're monitoring what's happening at a federal level. This is a federal law, so we're following federal rules. Our accountant attends a conference once a week to determine if these certain items are eligible and how they're eligible, uh, and then we respond accordingly.
Okay, so was that ambulance pre-approved?
No, we don't pre-approve anything.
So they went ahead and bought the ambulance, not knowing that it was gonna be approved?
Absolutely, and they paid for it, and they had intended to put a warrant article if it was not approved through the CARES Act. One of the instances is it has to be needed, and they felt it was absolutely needed uh, in order to uh, to deal with the COVID pandemic. They're actually using this vehicle to go to schools and test students on an as-needed basis. Again, it's testing only. They have nurses that are staffing it. Uh, so it was something they needed. We, we, we can only talk about the guidelines, answer questions to the best of our ability, say if something's likely to be approved or not approved, but ultimate decisions rest with the town if it's absolutely necessary and related exclusively to COVID.
Okay, Chief, did you wanna make a comment on that?
Mister Chair, thank you. Um, one of the things.
Don't forget there's two O'Briens here, so. Sorry.
That's okay.
The um, one of the, one of the benefits that I have is I, I'm able to attend Bristol County Fire Chiefs meetings and Plymouth County Fire Chiefs meetings. And I can tell you, it, there's a different sense or a different tone among the two groups of fire chiefs. We have, you know, they're not particularly happy in Bristol County, but they have certainty, and they have, they have, uh, they kinda know what they can count on as far as funding and things like that. Where Plymouth County, we're, we're frustrated because we're operating in the blind, you know, it's difficult to plan and difficult to develop our, our procedures and, without knowing what our resources are gonna be. And that, that's, that's the, the first observation that I have. And the second is applying what you said about the, the uh, mobile integrated health ambulance. Um, in our town, we have a des, deficit of portable radios. Now, that is deficit that existed pre-COVID, but the, when COVID hit, it uh, it escalated the need to address that problem, because it changed our procedures. We, in the fire service, we always operate in, in pairs as a safety measure. And COVID, the, the procedure and the recommended practice is to minimize exposure to your responders. So you're sending in one responder into a house instead of two, and you're relying on radio communication to, for safety. And we've had one glaring defect, or one glaring instance, where we had a, a paramedic assaulted, and we had a communication breakdown, and that picked that, that radio couldn't get out of the house. So, you know, this isn't something that's not in the budget. The need is exacerbated by COVID nineteen. Those radios will be specifically used for COVID nineteen response, yet we were told that, that that wasn't a, a valid expense. And so, you know, I understand you have a lot of interests and, and a lot of um, demands for, for these resources, but uh, it just, the disparity in how these resources are, are being um, provided is, is rather frustrating for, for public safety official like myself, because, you know, at the end of the day, I'm the one that, five minutes from now, has to respond to these calls, and I don't have the resources I need to, to handle the next COVID call because of, of the lack of resources.
So a couple of things, if I might, uh, through you, Mister Chair, Chief. Uh, I have attended a number of meetings with the uh, Plymouth County Chiefs. I'm always available and happy to do that, uh, Chief. So at any point in time, if there's that frustration, please let me know. This is the first I'm hearing of it, and, and it's interesting you talk about Bristol County. The state has determined that vehicles of any kind are ineligible. Uh, and so Bristol County, we hear, wish us they were part of the Plymouth County program, uh, because we are taking it on a case-by-case basis. And we are being responsive individually. There may be a frustration that it doesn't seem uniform, but that's the way the program is supposed to be, and we actually think that makes us better. Uniformity in this instance does not follow the law. In fact, there needs to be some flexibility and some uniqueness. Uh, so if there's any concern, please let me know. I'll be happy to do another Zoom meeting. I know Chief uh, Murphy set one up, Chief Sylvia set one up. Uh, we are doing our best uh, to provide whatever assistance we can. But every town is unique, as you know, Chief, and so something one town needs uh, and can make the case for, and show that it's COVID-related and is gonna use, be used for COVID, another town wouldn't. And that does create that disparity, and, and I wish there were something we could do about that, but that actually would limit the program. Bristol County is terribly frustrated, because they're being told no to a lot of resources that we're making eligible. Uh, and so uh, you know, you get that, you balance. It would be easier for us to just say no across the board, but we don't think that's what the law intended. With respect to the radios, um, there were some questions that had been asked, uh, and the way the answers had been provided verbally, uh, it led for an initial comment back, that given that description, they would be hard to make eligible for a couple of reasons. But you wrote a letter to the commissioners. I believe our attorney has responded uh, to that letter. I hope that you've received that response. I think it was sent back to the selectman, uh, and essentially said this, we cannot pre-approve, we can offer some guidance. The information we had been given uh, created some concerns. However, the town, if the town makes these determinations and submits uh, based on those determinations, the question will then come, well, is it going to be COVID-only, uh, and how will that be used? And, and so you folks will have to provide the narrative. Um, we did have a town submit, it's interesting, I'll, I'll try and give as close a example as I can. Um, a phone system. Uh, one town submitted for a phone system. Uh, they wanted to upgrade their phone system, uh, because they needed to have people be able to access the phones remotely, not come into town hall. They had had it in a capital plan. They were planning on doing it a long time ago. The system had been outdated for years. Uh, and so they were, they were, they didn't make as compelling a case that it was because of COVID. It was based on the information they had provided, much more something that they'd been wanting to do for a while. On the other hand, we had a town hall uh, that had never budgeted, hadn't had a con, conversation about a couple of phones. They needed to upgrade some components because of certain proximity issues and where people were in town hall. Uh, and were able to upgrade a few phones based on that situation and the information they're providing. So it is, it is tough when it's unique and every town is different, uh, but I think that affords us a little more flexibility, maybe to accommodate things that the state and other states aren't covering.
Uh, just to follow up, um, Chief, I, I didn't see any letter coming from any uh, lawyer from Plymouth County that I know of.
I've never seen it either, actually.
Uh, so it came from Murphy Hesse-Tumilehan. Uh, I will ask them to resend it. Uh, it should have been mailed, hmm, about a week and a half ago or two weeks ago?
I, I didn't see it, so.
Okay. I will certainly uh, get to them and make sure they send it along.
Mister Treasurer, would that have been physical mail or emailed over?
It would have been physical mail. The letter we received was physical mail. It was sent, so the challenge here was, the letter from Lakeville was sent to our commissioners, uh, and not to me as the grand administrator, so the commissioners forwarded to council, and council responded in the same fashion.
Mister O'Brien, one of the, one of the fundamental problems with the process you're describing is that if I go out and spend sixty thousand dollars on, on portable radios with the uncertainty of reimbursement, that burden that it creates within the, an already stressed system um, in backlash and actually caused me to, to lose resources in the upcoming budget year and, and further compromise, you know, the, the safety of my responders and public safety. Um, that's, that seems like the fun, fundamental frustration on, on the fire chief's part that I, that I speak to, is that inability to plan and, and, and that risk involved in, in making these expenditures uh, without any kind of, uh, you know, a concrete, you know, black and white system for reimbursement.
So we have heard that, and we understand that you and others, not just fire chiefs, but school superintendents, uh, in fact, maybe even more than fire chiefs, want us to give them an answer and say, this is definitely going to be approved. We are prohibited by law from doing that. We cannot, and if any other department is doing that, uh, state, county, they shouldn't be. Uh, because you're not supposed to do that, uh, as part of the program. What we can do is put up frequently asked questions, so we do our best. Uh, we had a question, uh, just the other day that we put up about an online. Uh, we had a question uh, just the other day that we put up about an online permitting system in town. Can a town buy an online permitting system because they want to prevent people from coming into town hall and be able to do everything remotely? So we posted a frequently asked question that said, yes, but if it doesn't meet these particular guidelines, then it would be rejected. So that is the way it really should be done, and it's disappointing if others aren't doing it that way. We know it's frustrating. We, we understand the challenge there because you have limited financial resources. You've got budgetary constraints, you want a definitive answer ahead of time. The problem is every town is so unique, Chief, every town is different, even every school department. We've had, we've had um, principals in one school asked for something that was eligible, and another school in the same town that was ineligible for any one of the reasons that something would be ineligible. So uh, we can go through everything with you, I'm happy. You know, if we want to revisit the radio issue or anything in your department, I'm happy to go through and say, here's what's, what looks like it's partially eligible, or here's where there's a challenge. Uh, we can go through all of that stuff. I want to make sure I'm available, the team wants to be available. Um, but we can't, we can't give any pre-approval because we're supposed to approve it on the backend. Uh, so uh, you know, uh, short of, I, I did think it was productive if we wanted to do another one with the fire chiefs. I think it's been a few weeks, and let everybody talk about these things, we can. Uh, they get, there is a frustration with the answer that we can't give you a definitive yes. Everybody wants a definitive yes, but if I do that, I'm violating the law and it probably hurts you on the backend.
Question, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, to the treasurer. I mean, is there precedence of a community submitting for a number of some device? Initially, they see their response, and then perhaps later they needed more. So what I'm saying is this, our fire chief really, really needed one or two of these now to get his communication in place for these calls that would due to COVID changing his procedures. Would that approval or non-approval set what the next round would be if he found he needed more?
What a great question. Um, so the nice thing about what we've set up is it's rolling admissions. So you could do that and purchase a small number right away. Uh, you feel that you can make the case, this is what's needed. You'd write COVID on the back of the device and only use it for a COVID response. Uh, that sounds uh, a pretty good way to handle it. It doesn't preclude a subsequent submission, however, it doesn't guarantee a subsequent submission either. So do you see why? Because if you made the case, let's talk about, I don't know, oxygen tanks. And the chief, and, and please, I'm not a firefighter, so I don't know. So Chief, forgive me if I'm using a bad example, but you could say, hey, I needed an oxygen tank just for my, just for my COVID team. It's only going to be used when we go out to COVID. Okay, but that doesn't mean any other oxygen tanks that you buy would be eligible. So uh, but it is rolling, so you could submit for a smaller number and see i- i- if that made it through the approval process. Uh, and if it did, and the rest of them were similarly situated, uh, that might be a way to address it.
Uh, Chief, I'm gonna, correct me anything I say here. The, the problem is when you're dealing with a small community like us, and we have two people on a shift, and then we have, we uh, have people come in, whether it's call firefighters or other firefighters, and to say that these, these uh, radios are going to be designated for a COVID-19 call is not practical from our standpoint. And, and the reason why that's not practical is because we don't have, you know, ten firefighters on a shift, we only have two firefighters on a shift or three firefighters. We had to put in temporary uh, firefighters in order to make sure that none of those firefighters were on the same team. And the other thing is, is that the chief, and help me out, Chief, we say every call is a COVID-19 call right now. Every firefighter is going out there, our first responder, including police officers. If they're going to a medical call, they better be prepared, you know, for COVID-19. Not say, oh geez, I don't know. They have to be prepared because you don't want to put the firefighters and the first respondents and the police officers in a position where they make the call and they're not prepared, so. I don't know, it's a little complicated, Tom, you know, from that perspective to say, well, we're going to put a little thing on the back of that, that, on that uh, on that radio that says, uh, oh. I think I lost myself.
No, Nancy started sharing.
To um, say it's going to be a radio that is, is going to be designated, you know, for COVID-19. So Chief, you want to add anything with that, but I'm, I'm trying to look at it from a practical standpoint, that it's not practical to do it that way.
So basically, every, every incident that we go to, we have to dress the part. We have to wear the respirators, we have to wear the eye protection because we've been hit and blindsided so many times by asympt- asymptomatic patients. And, and so technically, what the, the, the chair, the point the chair is making is that, that, you know, these radios is being used specifically for COVID-19 because everything we do has changed because of COVID-19. Every, our response today looks nothing like the response of October of 2019, and it is all directly related to COVID-19.
So the, the other thing, Tom, on top of that, is we get a lot of mutual call aids from other towns, especially, I'm not picking on Middleborough, but Middleborough has a private ambulance service. So when they don't have enough resources, guess who they call? They call Lakeville, or they call the surrounding communities, which means that we go on that call, and these first respondents have to be prepared for COVID-19. So to say a radio is going to be designated for COVID-19, I, I don't see how you do that.
I don't either. So unfortunately, you're looking for me to give you an answer I cannot give you, and I apologize. I wish that I could. All I can tell you is, here are the guidelines. They're, they're publicly available, and if you're following all the guidelines, you meet all the qualifications, you decide that it's something the town needs to do, please do it, but I can't say, yes, it's going to be reimbursed, and that gets to the chief's point. Well, it's hard with a small budget. However, we're at least not taking this position of others that say, no. We're saying it's up to you to decide. Uh, and, and I wish that I could give you a definitive answer. I know that's what you're looking for, but I, I cannot, and I, I really, I wish that I could. I, y- you know, my, I have many dear friends that are firefighters. I understand all of what you guys are saying to me, but uh, th- there are some pretty strict rules, and we're all doing our best to follow them.
Okay, uh, we haven't seen the letter from the attorney yet, okay, about that. And uh, so um, I know that the chief put a very detailed letter together, you know, to Plymouth County now. What was said, um, outside of that, I have no idea, so, you know.
Yeah, so the letter responded, I think from council, and I will call them first thing tomorrow, uh, responded to that letter. Uh, so um, I will have them try and email it uh, to you, Mr. Chair, so you can get it quicker. Uh, I apologize if it got lost in the mail. Um, but uh, we'll certainly get that to you.
Okay, we appreciate that. The other thing that supposedly uh, was discussed um, was for a telephone system for the town hall. Now, did you have discussions with the town administrator about that?
We did.
And?
So again, the answer was the same. We couldn't pre-commit, but if you guys felt it was necessary as a response to COVID and could make the case that it needed to be done, then you guys should submit. If not, then you shouldn't.
So was the case submitted?
I can't answer that question. Wasn't in the first round, Mr. Chair. I do not know. It could be in the second round. That's with our CPA. I can check on that.
Okay. So um, yeah, that's a problem because we have the uh, the system ready to go live.
Well, then I, I, I'm sure it probably was submitted. I, I don't want to say it wasn't. It would have been in the one that I talked about. Do you know how much it was?
$40,000.
Yeah, I, I'm bet you that's your second submission, which was $40,277.56.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, but I, I will give you a call uh, tomorrow and, and let you know. That seems to make sense to me, though, given that number.
Okay. Um, all right, so um, as you know, the, the um, the schools are starting to, according to the state, are allowed up to this point, $225 per student. And that's the given, right?
So it's not actually. Um, it's interesting how the state did it. Uh, the state is saying you're up to, you're eligible up to, but you have to prove your expenses.
Oh, of course, yeah.
What we're saying is, we're not limiting you to 225. We've actually released uh, what appears to be about, and you heard from the chairman, 60 to 70% more. If you're spending 240 a pupil, that does not matter to us. The state is limiting it to 225, they're saying up to. We don't, if, if your schools have that need and you're in your cap that we talked about of the 1.6, it could be $300 per pupil.
Yeah. Two more questions, uh, then maybe the board has other questions. Can we, knowing where we are today, it's, we've had the, the states had the highest cases today than they had since April 4th, and we know that's heading in the wrong direction, and all of us are anticipating that. Um, we hope it gets better, but this certainly is not heading in the right direction right now. So from a supply standpoint, whether it's the school, uh, the, the uh, fire department or the police department, as far as uh, can you pre-purchase supplies for PPE for the first quarter of next year?
So you can pre-purchase supplies? Don't say it's for the first quarter of next year, just say it's for the, in response to the pandemic and anticipated increase in cases.
Okay.
Because they have to be purchased and paid for by December 30th.
Okay, so if we decide that we're gonna, we need more, which I can't speak for the chief right now, um, then we should auto the supplies now?
Yes.
Okay, second question is that um, we have been told or asked, you know, to be ready to uh, set up a vaccine dispens- dispensary. And what about the expenses associated with that? Now, they're saying to get it ready uh, sometime by February and March.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't understand. So you're looking to get a medical dispensary?
Yes.
Where you're dispensing drugs?
A vaccine.
Vaccine.
Oh, okay, so a, a testing site?
No, vaccine.
Okay, just, okay, so unfortunately, it has to be spent by December 30th. So if you wanted to, and I'm just hypothesizing here, if you needed a tent, let's say, because you're going to set up a vaccine site, that tent would be eligible.
Well, we probably need multiple tents because we're, we're talking about trying to do it with uh, free town together at the regional school district, you know, in the parking lot, so there's a lot of costs, you know, associated with uh, setting this up, and of course, we can't even talk about the staffing requirements and training, you know, that needs to be done, you know, as well, so. Um, so I think that uh, um, we should uh, that should be discussed, you know, with the Plymouth County Commission is because um, they're asking us to do this now, to be prepared. Um, Chief, do you want to say anything about that?
We have, um, we've been instructed to, to basically prepare for uh, a uh, a site, a dispensing site of vaccine, and we have a plan in place that Board of Health manages that plan, but that plan is completely indoors. So because of COVID-19 being uh, as contagious as it is, we have to rework the whole plan. So all the supplies and, and all the um, you know, the facilities that we've, we've organized related to uh, related to, you know, typical swine flu or something like that. Now we have to reinvent everything, and it has to be spaced out over a large area. Um, so it, it, tents, radio communications, again, things like that are all going to be um, related expenses to this, to this change in, in practice and procedure that we're being told to formulate at this time.
And Chief, is every town being told to do the same thing?
I'm not sure. I've received this uh, message through our Board of Health.
Yeah, um, so obviously, uh, you know, and you folks, I think we're very good, I, I think it was Lakeville, to do early voting, you needed to open up the old town hall. Uh, and that came with some costs, and those costs were submitted to us and were reimbursed, I think, in the first round. So again, if it's, if it's COVID-related and things that you need to do to accommodate something that's being told to you by your Board of Health and by the state, then those things are likely eligible, but I, I can't pre-approve everything and say yes. It sounds like they would be.
Okay. All right, the board members have any other questions?
Um, Rich, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I don't know where we're at. I know revenue, lost revenue was tossed about. Where are we at on any consideration of lost revenue?
You want to answer that, Tom?
Yeah, so the CARES Act specifically prohibits uh, revenue replacement. Uh, Congress had dealt with that uh, in two fashions. One, the House uh, up on Capitol Hill passed the HEROES Act, which has some revenue replacement. The Senate did a different version, I forget, it also begins with an H. Uh, we were hopeful that in August, there would be some kind of compromise on Capitol Hill down in DC. Didn't happen. It looked like a few weeks ago uh, that there'd been an agreement, I think, between uh, the Treasurer Steve Mnuchin uh, and uh, the House to some number. Uh, and then, as I understand it, there was a tweet saying, no deal. Uh, and then a few days later, a tweet saying, you better make a deal. Uh, the simple fact of the matter is no deals have been struck. Uh, and so uh, unless Capitol Hill gets its act together quite candidly, uh, I worry about that. Uh, I worry particularly, and it's been fascinating to notice the debate between the House and the Senate, because the House bill understands the need to get revenue back to cities and towns. It specifically says that. No bill that the US Senate has done yet includes money for cities and towns. In fact, they're arguing that the cities and towns don't need those monies. Uh, and it's very frustrating as a county treasurer to sit here and say, hold it. I know that's what our towns need the most of, is some revenue replacement. Um, but the CARES Act specifically cannot be used for that.
Okay, I thought that there, so there was some back and forth, but it's not at our Plymouth County CARES level or in our rules.
Yeah, no, it's, it's entirely up on Capitol Hill. I do hope they come to some agreement. My instinct tells me that's probably not going to be till after November 3rd at this point. Um, and I, I hope they don't do the same thing and offer some arbitrary deadlines that are hard to meet. Uh, the conversation I've had with our congressman, and I will tell you this, the Massachusetts delegation has been very supportive of, of uh, relief to our cities and towns, extremely supportive. I, I've talked to almost all of them individually about this, and they get it. They know that we need to do this. The formula that they were talking about is using a community's FY19 budget uh, and simply replacing that revenue uh, on a dollar-for-dollar basis. That is what's envisioned in the HEROES Act. The HEROES Act is remaining on the House side, though, and has not been taken up by the Senate. Um, here in Massachusetts, we can't do any of that uh, without federal assistance, so we're really going to have to keep an eye and see what happens down in Congress.
Okay, thank you.
You all set, Brian?
I was just gonna, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna say to uh, you know, Treasurer O'Brien, thank you very much for coming tonight. I'm sure you've got not just us, but every other, you know, municipality in the county asking similar questions and trying to, you know, crack the code. Um, I mean, I do share the, the chief's frustrations on, you know, what, what is the right thing to do here? And I'm still trying to figure it out in my own head. Um, certainly, we're a small department, whether it's fire, police, Board of Health, et cetera, and you know, we got a few folks sick there, it wipes us out, and then I don't know if we have services left for our residents, so. I think we've got some interesting decisions to make. Um, I know the chief wouldn't have even been, you know, had to have been thinking about this if it wasn't for COVID since it has just upended every procedure that they've had for years. Um, in my mind, that to me says, yeah, it's COVID-related because we wouldn't have had to change those procedures. So um, now again, just thanks a lot. I know it's kind of, you know, taking a little bit of a bruising answering these questions for us, so like, appreciate your time.
You, you know, it's my, and thank you for saying that. I really don't mind. Uh, I don't consider it at all. You guys are advocating for your communities as I am, uh, and I hope you recognize us as a partner. Uh, we like to think that we took a little bit of a broader opinion than the state and other counties and other states. We're not just simply saying no to things, so that gives a little flexibility, but it does make it harder. I absolutely agree with you, uh, the, the chief. I know that doesn't make it any easier, but it at least affords some opportunity there. Uh, if any of you would like to call me offline and talk about things particularly, uh, we can. Uh, overtime, that needs to be, that needs to be done at the fire department uh, for COVID-related. Somebody gets sick with COVID, that overtime, that's coverable. So there are things that, that are coverable that you guys are dealing with, uh, and we certainly want to make sure uh, that that gets submitted. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to talk to any of you anytime. If you want me back. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to talk to any of you anytime. If you want me back, I, I know this sometimes isn't the most riveting topic. I feel bad, cause I know the Historic Commission has been waiting patiently, uh, to have their say, uh, but, you know, we know this is valuable to you guys and we want to be here as a resource.
Okay, we appreciate your time, Tom. Thank you, and, um, I'm sure we'll be in touch shortly.
Yeah, excellent. I look forward to it. Call anytime.
Okay, thanks for.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your patience.
Thanks.
Take care. Have a nice evening.
We appreciate it.
Stay safe, everyone.
You too. Okay. Next on the agenda is to meet with the Historical Commission to discuss Veterans Day two thousand and twenty and one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary committee. And let's see. We have, uh, Brian Reynolds, Joan Morton.
Present.
And I think I signed Nancy LaFave, there's Nancy LaFave. And Jerry Taylor. Is that it?
Here, yep.
Okay, well, thanks for coming on. Okay, so, uh, at your request, uh, you wanted to, uh, meet with the board, I guess, first of all, to discuss, uh, uh, Veterans Day.
We are posted and we have a quorum.
You want to, um.
Call to order.
Sure, go ahead.
Do we do a roll call? Brian Reynolds. I know he's present.
I see.
Brian?
Needs to unmute himself, if he can.
You're still muted. Joan Morton?
Present.
Jerry Taylor?
Present.
Nancy LaFave, present. Delia Murphy is a new member. Um, she unfortunately, her mother passed away today, so she's, they were, um, she was taking care of her at home. So she, I got an email just shortly there. That's why I was on and off. So, um, she's not present today.
So who's in charge?
Brian.
I'm sorry, Brian, I think you need to call in again. I think you were muted and we cannot unmute your, your landline or cell phone directly. So you may need to call back in, I'm sorry. I think Brian can hear us, he just, yep, there he goes.
Um, while we're waiting, can everyone hear me? This is Leah Fabian. I know we did. Was it the amendment of the new member at the last meeting? Is that what it was? Tracy, do you remember?
Yeah.
All right, that's what we had done. And then we had said, we asked if the, um, Historical Commission could meet with us, correct? That's, okay.
Okay.
We'll let Brian in as soon as he calls back.
Does anybody else want to talk about either Veterans Day or the one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary?
Um, I think at the last meeting, we started to talk about it and I had said that I had been to that many times and it was outside and I mean, as long as everyone's wearing their masks and socially distancing, I think I had said that I didn't really have an issue with, um, having Veterans Day outside. I'm pretty sure that's what we talked about. I don't know how anyone else feels.
I'm okay with that, too.
I think our concern is with the fact that the numbers are climbing. I'm not necessarily in Lakeville, but, uh, they are increasing and whether or not a lot of the people that come are, are veterans. There's some, so, there's some concerns about that, even the social distancing issue.
So are you hesitating now, would you say? Not to not, are you hesitating on doing it?
I think, well, we haven't had a meeting to discuss it, so. Okay. We have, I'm just expressing one, one point of view is that, um, there's some hesitancy on my part. So I think somebody else should weigh in. Brian is, uh, still muted, I think.
Uh, yeah, I think he's being automatically muted when he comes into the meeting. Um, I think we have to somehow change that preference, but I'm not sure we can do it now. Uh, after the meeting is started, oh boy. Um, let me see what I can do.
The thing is, we start at the, uh, Assawamse School at the, uh, William Hickcock, Hickcock. Hitchcock?
Yeah. Hitchcock.
Hitchcock. Um, uh, memorial stone at, uh, at the driveway of Assawamse School. And then we walk down to Dickron Duran Square and, um, we have a little ceremony there and then we go up to the, uh, the honor roll. And, um, and we usually go into the, uh, town of, uh, town, uh, hall and, um, have a display of uniforms of the different services and, um, and refreshments. But maybe if we eliminated the indoor part, that we could still have the outdoor part.
Brian, it's on.
Hello, Brian.
I think Brian's audio.
Well, finally, I think I maybe have gotten in. Thank you.
Yes.
Um, basically, we've just discussed a little bit about Veterans Day. What we do do is if there's inclement weather, the understanding is everything is held at the Historic Townhouse and the wreaths will be placed there in other sites earlier in the day, except for the honor roll area and the, the flagpole area at the Historic Townhouse. And that's, will happen that day. So if we do have rain, then that hope, that changes everything because of the building and accessibility and social distancing, so.
I, I would think that if it rains, then you're gonna have to cancel it, because there's no way that you could put, you know, probably, maybe eight people with social distancing in the, uh, Old Town House. So if you decide that you want to do it, but if the, um, if the Historical Commission wants to have a meeting and discuss it, and then, uh, get back to the board and we still have time here, um, and you could decide whether you want to move forward or not, and maybe, I think as Jerry put it out, maybe you just do the one area, uh, Dick House, what is it, Dick House Square, I think it's called. Instead of, instead of going from Assawamse over and back to the Old Town Hall, I mean, those, those are the different options, but once again, everybody would have to wear masks and have to have social distancing and all that stuff associated with it, so. Um, since it, it is outside, um, it is allowed. Um, and I think it's, you know, probably up to the, uh, Historical Commission if they want to do it. I, you know, I think Leah already said, oh, Brian, I don't know how you feel.
Our monthly meeting is scheduled for Wednesday night, so it would be a timely thing that we could discuss.
Brian, do you have anything to say on that?
Well, you know, I think we should move forward, but we have to discuss it on Wednesday night.
Okay. Brian, Dan, did you have anything to say?
No, I feel the same way as we did the last meeting. I mean, if everything was done in a socially distant way and the weather participates, um, then yeah, I think it would be a nice thing to do. Um, but certainly we have a, a backup plan if, if Mother Nature doesn't play nice.
Okay, so, go ahead, Leah.
Chair, if I may, you're catching me, you're all catching me on a very biased day for me, because I was just at the Bourne Cemetery today. Um, and I think even if it's raining, I'll still show up. So we only have to do one place, just to limit it, but the eleventh day, the eleventh month, the eleventh.
Hour.
Um, it, it kinda, you know, and I just was down in Bourne today, so I'm a little, uh, little emotional, so that's, that's where I stand.
Well, the Lakeville United Church of Christ has already agreed to ring the bells at eleven o'clock on the eleventh, which they, which we typically do for them. So that's gonna happen anyways, but, um, the rest of this will have to come.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess that's what we'll do as far as that's concerned on Veterans Day. The next thing was the, um, Historical Commission wants to form a one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary committee, um, which is in two thousand and twenty-eight, Nancy? So, um, I guess, um, Historical Commission would need to come forward with, um, how you want that structured and, you know, do you have people that already want to participate? And, uh, I know you probably have a similar outline as to what you did before on the hundred and fiftieth. So, um, I guess if the Commission wants to come forward with a recommendation, then we can go ahead and do that.
What happened in two thousand and three is that we started about five years before to get ready for it. And we had things, events that led up to the year two thousand and three, so that we started doing area historical walking tours. And one time we had a wagon with, which pulled by horses that we took on and had, um, discussed the area. So we still have lots of areas of Lakeville that we didn't do in two thousand and three. And we also pull, uh, printed out tour books, so that talked about the areas, historical books of, of the areas. So we have those two things, but the main reason is just to get us going, because it, eight years goes by really fast, especially when you get to be. The last year, last time that we did this, the Historical Commission was the beginning of the anniversary committee and the Board of Selectmen at that time did appoint us to start. We, at the end of two thousand and three, we set aside money for this coming one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. So we already have some money to start with, which we, we had to ask for money that, last time, and we're not gonna ask for it this time. So that's a good thing for us to do. So what we would like you to do is appoint us and then we will be the core to start and we'll start doing some planning, but then we're gonna have people that will want to join us to do either a special event or want to be there for the most of the time. So, um, we, and we need that, because there's gonna, the next anniversary, most of us probably won't be here. Just because of life expectancy. So we want to make sure that we have some people that will be around, that will continue this sort of thing every twenty-five years, you know.
Okay, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to appoint the, um, Historical Commission, the one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary committee.
So moved.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
V D and I.
Day, I.
The camera, I. Okay, well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
What we did last time is that we would come forward and ask the selectmen to appoint additional people as the interest showed up. So it became, the closer to the, the date, it became a more regularly monthly thing or every other month thing.
All right, well, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you all.
Annual appointments, or are these gonna be?
Duration of the anniversary, to the anniversary.
Thank you, Tracy.
So for eight years? An eight-year appointment?
Uh, I guess we'll have to check to find out if we could do that. We might have to reappoint him every, uh, July, so.
Yep.
Okay, so for now, July thirty-first.
We'll have to find out, I don't know.
I will send you a list of the names, Tracy.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I see, um, Katie Goodfellow, poor Katie, has been hanging on here since the beginning of our meeting. And I believe Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, you want to talk about the special town meeting?
She was on the phone.
See you, but you're muted.
Nope, there she is now. Immuted, Katie.
Now I'm not muted. Okay, there we go. So, um, it worked out well, because I was able to, um, complete my drive and get in front of the camera. Um, I don't know a whole lot about what's happening here. I, I received a message from Tracy, um, that we were considering having a special town meeting November thirtieth.
Okay.
And I watch all of your meetings, Richard and Leah and Brian, and I recall that the last I heard, we had decided not to have a special town meeting, so I'm very curious. Why the turnaround? So I'm all ears.
Okay, so we're gonna go to item number ten, is to discuss the scheduling of special town meeting. The reason why, and of course, the board hasn't decided yet either, so. Um, the reason why we're reconsidering, you know, doing it is that we have the fiscal twenty-one budget. Um, is, uh, we need to make some adjustments, you know, to that budget for actually about four or five things. Um, one being just, we just appointed the intro, uh, Treasurer Collector, which was a, um, official salary, which is no longer an official salary, so we have to move that. And then we just changed, uh, our I T company from an employee to an outside service. So we have to do that. And then we, um, also have some problems, um, which, um, I just found out about, that we're shot thirty thousand dollars for, uh, property and liability insurance, and I am meeting with the agent on Wednesday. And then we have some, um, funding that we need to do in the fire department, having to do with, uh, temporary firefighters, since you heard the long conversation about the CARES money, which is gonna expire on December thirty-first, and we have to make sure that we have the funding for that. And then the other thing is that, as you know and remember, that we delayed, you know, some of our, um, capital items. And, uh, we have about two hundred thousand dollars worth of capital items that, uh, we would like to get approved. Um, uh, one of them, uh, being the, uh, Fire Department's, uh, pickup truck, which is badly needed, needs to be replaced. And, uh, I wish we hadn't delayed our decision, but we did. And the second thing with them is fifty-seven thousand dollars for the radios, if we're not gonna get reimbursed for the radios, cause we really need, we really need the, um, the radios, you know, as well. And then there was, uh, unmarked police closure, but anyways. Um, so, um, the other thing is that, uh, with the uncertainty as far as the state is concerned, if we were gonna wait till the May annual town meeting, which is supposed to be the second week in May, and if the state has, uh, all kinds of financial problems and, and so forth, and we're not able to hold that meeting because of not knowing, you know, where our budgets are, that it pushes till, uh, June, which is a problem, because, uh, some of these things need to be funded in advance. So, um, I'm talking to Todd Hassett and the accountant. We thought it'd be best to clean these things up now, because we have no idea, uh, what's gonna happen, you know, come spring. And, uh, we're all concerned, I'm concerned, as, as I'm sure the board is concerned. Um, this year is gonna be okay. Fiscal twenty-two, in my opinion, is gonna be a problem, you know, because of revenue and so forth and so on, so. That's why we changed our mind, Katie, and board members. So the board is just hearing this just like you. So what we'd like to do is, uh, propose a special town meeting on eleven, uh, uh, November thirtieth, uh, six thirty, seven o'clock, whatever anybody prefers, and we would have it in the auditorium. We could, I mean, hold on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hold on. Um, we, we'll put the high school first, so you know, just say high school, then we'll make a decision after that. Um, because we would expect to have reduced quorum and we don't expect to have, you know, there's not gonna be anything controversial on these, it's probably only gonna be two articles, so it's gonna be quick. Well, three articles, we have a few unpaid bills as well. So, um, that's where we are.
Permission to speak?
Certainly.
So um thank you for clarifying that it um could be somewhere in the in the um high school because I'm not sure if the auditorium is going to be remotely plausible um because of the requirements, as we discovered when we did the annual town meeting. We have certain requirements about distance and we were not going to be able to do that in the auditorium. Um another concern is that unlike a June meeting, will be November thirtieth and it will be cold. And we do know that we seem to, you've mentioned yourself, um things seem to be trending in a more dangerous direction, and so we also need to be very cognizant of that. Um and my last, and I'm not positive about this, but I recall that the quorum reduction did not apply to special town meetings, which is
It does.
Because now, it does, okay, because I remember at the time of our annual town meeting, it did not.
Right.
So there's been a change. Okay, so I I
I got an email from town council said that it does apply.
Wonderful, that's very important.
Very, very, otherwise we wouldn't call it.
I was going to say we can't do it. Um so I, you know, I would like to not not necessarily say it has to be in in the high school, that we might be able to explore some options that are safe for everyone, um or as many people as we can make safe. Um and I would need a little time to be able to plan that. And Jose, I believe, is in the background right now and um he would also be involved in the planning because of the late CAM involvement.
Okay, so what we'll do is uh we'll call a special town, uh because I don't know if the board members, the board members want to say anything yet. Uh but we'll call a special town meeting and a special town meeting will be held at the high school. And then we'll, over the next few weeks, we'll decide where it's going to be.
Right.
That okay? Um uh uh Leah, are you there? Or Brian?
Um I'm sorry, Mister Chair, I was just going to ask Katie if she's available on the thirtieth.
I am. Tracy did check and I confirmed with her, I I can do the thirtieth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh two questions on my behalf, I believe. Have we heard anything more in the um the petition that we might be expecting that might force us into reacting to a meeting? Would that potentially get wrapped? I have not. Okay, I'm just curious if we'd end up rolling that into this. And then maybe for Katie, if things were to trend really bad by November thirtieth, and what's the process for just canceling a town meeting? Is this
Moderator has the um, the moderator can move the meeting, so moderator has the right to do that. Also with the citizens petition, if that was the only thing um that was coming before us, the moderator also has the ability to move that um if if it if need be. But you know, I I would like to, I know that representative town meetings can be done via Zoom. Um I I don't know if I really like that idea, uh because it's logistically very difficult and also not everyone has um access to the technology to be able to do a Zoom meeting. But I do want to take a look at that as a possibility. If things trend worse, um we might not be able to have an in-person town meeting. It just might not be able to be plausible. But also there, we know that the Free Town, um we had a Free Town town meeting in the parking lot of the high school. Uh there were some difficulties in that meeting, but I think we might be able to work around those. So I'd like to explore that as an option as well. Um we don't want to be outside on November thirtieth. You probably don't want to be outside, but we would have to try and figure out how we could best do that. So, and then we could do the the gymnasium again, that might be, especially if we have a reduced quorum. Um that might be the safest option to do, but again, I would like to explore our options before committing to an exact location.
Okay.
And what in?
Um so um I'll entertain a motion to hold a special town meeting at the high school on November thirtieth at uh six-thirty or seven. Anybody have a preference?
Six-thirty.
Okay. Um and um
Details to follow.
The um we'll open the warrant. Uh the warrant will be open until um Monday. Uh Monday, Monday, where are we? Monday, October twenty-six till uh four P M. Uh we don't, we don't anticipate any, there's no zoning articles that are going to be presented. This will only be financial. You know, like I said, there'll be maybe three articles on this, so um we don't have any other articles at this point, unless some of the other committees of uh of boards want to um uh put something on, but uh we we don't have to. But so we could just go eliminate it, get it quickly uh done.
All right, so I make a motion that we have a town, a special town meeting on November thirtieth at six-thirty P M. Uh should I include opening the warrant and closing the warrant on the uh opening the warrant as of now and closing the warrant on October twenty-sixth at four P M?
October twentieth.
Twentieth?
I'm sorry, twenty-sixth, excuse me, I was looking at the wrong calendar, excuse me. Uh okay, you want to second that motion, Brian?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Um do we have a couple possible bylaw um corrections to put on there as well?
We're going to wait till the annual time meeting. I talked to the town clerk about it, so it's not something that really would infect anything. There's a couple of words that need to be corrected, but it's not going to affect the bylaw itself.
Okay, good.
So uh all those in favor, I'll have further discussion. Um um Katie, I hate to put pressure on you. But we really need to make this decision, you know, by the first of next week, so.
Yes, well, I'm going to be doing some background work. I've already actually done some pre-work about the possibility of having it in the parking lot at the school. You know, we don't know what the next few weeks are going to look like for COVID. So we need to be able to be flexible, but um I do think we can have one. I just want to have one in a safest mode possible.
Okay, there's some technology issues with one in the parking lot, as you know.
I I do know that Free Town encountered some, but I'm, I don't know if they're necessarily insurmountable issues. We might be able to learn from what they did and and find some workarounds.
And just for everybody playing at home, uh meta moderator, our quorum is what again right now? Is it currently twenty-five?
I believe it is twenty. We set it at twenty-five.
We don't have to revoke that.
We do, we do. That is, that only applied for the annual town meeting um in June.
Okay, so we will have to revoke that.
Yes, we will. Okay, all those in favor?
EB and I.
Day I.
Uh la camera I. Okay, thank you. Now you know why you were invited to the meeting, Katie.
Now I know. I I had some suspicions. Okay, thank you very much, and I'll I'll get back to you and let you know when I find out.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks, Katie.
Okay, uh continuing on here. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss the options uh regarding uh plate, replacing the town administrator. Okay, um the first item that we need to uh discuss is um do we need a interim town administrator until we find a new town administrator?
I say no.
Okay, um I agree. I think that um you know, with the three, the three board members um and are very good uh department heads, I think we can uh get by for a few months and uh not bring in an interim, because if you do bring in an interim, that means you got to train that person on what's going on and so forth and so on, and uh I don't think it's necessary, but that's me.
I'd also like to say that I think Tracy's doing a good job holding down the office. And you as well, Mister Chair.
Thank you. You have an opinion, Brian?
If things keep going the way they have been, I would agree with the two of you. Um if if suddenly things get a bit hectic, um it could change, but I think for now we're doing okay.
Okay. Okay, the second thing having to do with replacing the town administrator is that uh we need to uh review the job description and modify the uh job description to make sure that we have the uh requirements uh that our expectations are what the requirements are for a new town administrator. So maybe uh we could take that job description, which we all have, and um at the next meeting, talk about the proposed changes that we need to make.
Okay.
Okay. Third thing is that uh we need to decide whether we want to use a search committee or not um to go out and um um look for a new town administrator. Uh just so you know, if we do hire a search firm, that it's going to cost somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars, you know, to do that. So uh keep that in mind, and once again, uh we can get together some um search firms that could potentially be used, and then um we can decide at the next meeting if you want to move ahead with that at all and at uh that that uh strategy. Okay, somebody has an opinion now?
Well, I mean, I uh went through human, I went to human resources to see what information might have been left over from the last search committee that we paid eight thousand dollars for. And everything I found, I uh I left a copy. I don't know if you've received it or not, uh Mister Chair and Brian.
I did, thank you.
Yeah, there wasn't really, I was expecting to see like a formal report. There was interviews done by the search committee with each department head on what they felt as though was important. I was expecting to find um because I came in right at the time we were doing the interviews for a town administrator. So I wasn't here before for the whole search committee um hiring um and contract stuff, but I was expecting to find some sort of a report that what they found from our department heads other than just a verbal explanation. There really wasn't a formal report that was given to us, so um I uh right now, I'm inclined to just go without, but again, you know, we can you know, I'm, I I can go either way with that one. Um but I feel like, I feel like the three of us could do a pretty competent job of, you know, putting out the ad and human resources, Clorinda is fantastic. Um so I you know, I don't want to say yes or no, uh you know, definitely right now, but I'm leaning with no search committee right now.
I was going to ask, and I don't know um if there's anything procurement wise to think about here, but I was going to ask if it's worth reaching out to the company that the town used last time and see if it would, you know, if the rate would be reduced, since they've probably already done a bunch of the legwork, maybe some of that is reusable. Um given that it's only been fifteen, eighteen months or so.
Okay, I uh but I also think that if we are going to do that, we should probably interview some search um firms to uh look at, you know, their qualifications and where they have done work and and so forth and so on and filling positions, et cetera, so um yeah, there's two pieces to that, Brian. Um not only the costs associated, but with the qualifications of the uh search firm as well.
Understood and agreed.
So uh at the next meeting, we'll discuss that and decide what the next steps are going to be. The third, um third, number four is that I think we ought to consider the makeup of the search committee. I think besides the, this is my opinion, besides the Board of Selectmen, I think that we might want to consider maybe other board members from other boards or committees. Um department heads, you know, as part of the search committee. Um and I think that we ought to have a couple of people at large from the community uh that should be uh participating on the uh search committee, and that's just my opinion.
Is that whether we use a company or not? Well, just for everyone's knowledge, the way it was done last time, the search committee narrowed down the finalists, and then the finalists were interviewed by the three selectmen. Um the human resource um manager and um the previous, the retiring town administrator was also um offered an opportunity to ask questions. So would you be doing this in either case, whether we have a search committee or not?
I thought the search committee was primarily the Board of Selectmen. The voted, voted search committee was the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, well, yes, it was, but
What I'm saying is that we open it up to other I I don't know, I'm just throwing this out to get seven people involved or something like that that can, you know, review the the resumes and and, you know, ask specific questions about, you know, uh certain issues and things like that. I'm just throwing this out as an idea.
Yep.
I'm fine with it. If if we have a search committee of some kind, I think opening it up to get the perspective of other folks would be great. It was a small committee, but what we just did with the interim treasurer collector was good. Um we had a varying group of people that all had different questions and ideas. Um that was good, I think, for a position as, you know, important as that, whether it's department heads or some of the other um committee chairs. Um that, yeah, I'm on board.
Well, I mean, I just give you an example, you know, something like Todd Hassett, who, you know, town accountant got all kinds of experience, especially dealing with, you know, town administrators and stuff like that, and his knowledge, you know, that he would bring to the table. As an example, I'm just, you know, throwing him out, you know, as an example, so.
Yeah, I, you know, I almost want to say if we go that route and maybe we don't need a search company because we will have some more like expertise on our own search committee. So if we opened it up.
Yeah, the one thing I might ask, and Leah, you were the closest connected at the time, if we just go to search committee is just find it, maybe go back and find where were the various places that they did the advertisements and such. I mean, I've been reading some of the local papers that have been also hiring um town managers, town administrators lately, and some of their applicant applicants are from well out of state and like looking to move back home. So I don't know if there's um some spots that we might just overthink to publish in that, you know, we might get some other candidates in.
Yeah, um I I agree, Brian. I think that, you know, we should um widen our pool, you never know. I uh we can find out. I don't know if um Tracy, would you know where they, I I don't know because I came in right.
Yeah, they they advertise it on the MMA, which is the big site, and then there's the uh town administrators, town uh uh managers association where they they advertise, you know, on there and post, you know, all the positions and those are the the two key places. I mean, to, you know, say you're going to advertise it in the Boston Globe or, you know, whatever, those don't work anymore. You know, maybe there's some other other sites that, you know, uh
I don't know.
They're, you know, knows, you know, about, but I mean, tho- those are the primary two um sites that are used.
I do know that I have a lot of um, you know, people that I've connected with on LinkedIn. I wasn't sure how many municipal people would be on LinkedIn, but they also have, you know, and again, with Indeed, Indeed is always a go-to. Brian, um but I don't, again, I don't know how much municipal, just like with LinkedIn, but then I was pleasantly surprised at how many um municipal folks are using LinkedIn as well, so um you know, I didn't know if they had much more specific networking versus just being on the whole broad LinkedIn.
Okay, well, we've got a lot to think about and uh we'll have some of these discussions at the next uh meeting.
But although, I I mean, otherwise, I'd, you know, really like to thank you um Mister Chair for, you know, checking the emails. I know uh, you know, I've been working with Clorinda on a few things, Brian. Um there's a misconception out there that I did something to help with the Verizon thing last week, but um I knew my Verizon was slow, but Brian mentioning that, you know, we got to take care of our virtual learners is what um, you know, Brian stepped right up. He's got enough going on in his personal life, but he stepped right up and jumped right into that, so I think we're we're covering the bases pretty well right now. jumped right into that, so I think we're, we're covering the bases pretty well right now.
Okay, all set, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay, number eight on the agenda is to discuss designating a planning, discuss designating planning board as a special municipal employee. The, anytime any member of any of the boards, you know, want to either be an employee or want to be a contractor for the town, they have to be designated as a special municipal employee. So I will entertain a motion. I will entertain a motion to where is that thing? Designate the planning board as a, as a special municipal employee.
The whole planning board or just?
Yeah, we used to do it by individuals, Leah. Now, because, you know, now we do boards, you know, it's a lot easier to just do boards. Tracy, you there? Tracy? Oh, she's, she must be having trouble.
No, I'm here. The whole board committee or commission needs to be designated as a special municipal employee.
That, that's a change. It used to be different. All right, so.
So I will make a motion that the planning board be designated as a special municipal employee.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? Hold the favor.
Maybe an eye.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is to discuss appointing Michelle McCarron, was that her name?
Yep.
I think that's good. That's pretty good. As, as, as forty-three D coordinator and vote to sign the contract. The previous town administrator was the project coordinator for the forty-three D project. And since we currently don't have a town administrator, we need to appoint somebody in the interim to fill this position. And Michelle is on the planning board and has shown interest in doing this position. We actually talked to a few other people, Nate Darling and Mark Knox, chairman of the planning board. We talked about a few people and we feel, you know, that she would be a good candidate, you know, to fill this position. And this is not going to require lots of work. It's, you know, five hours, maybe ten hours a week initially for the first couple of months, and then after that, once it goes to the individual boards, then this position will only be required maybe once a month or a couple of times a month or whatever. So if you, if you look at the contract that has been drafted there, there's a description of what the permits coordinator will do. And I don't know if the board has had a chance to review the requirements, you know, for this position.
I have.
Okay, any, no questions? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to, to to hire Michelle McCarron as the forty-three D coordinator.
So moved.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Maybe an eye.
Day, aye.
The camera, aye. Okay. So we did the special time meeting. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You also need to vote to sign the contract.
I'm sorry, did I miss that? Would you may I make a motion to sign the contract as well, please?
Yes. So moved.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, aye.
The camera, aye. Okay, so next on the, the agenda is to discuss and vote and sign the contract with the firefighters' union, the police union, and the laborers' union. As you know, we had agreed to these contracts back in June. And contracts have completed, have been reviewed by town council, and have been reviewed by each of the fire unions, and I know that you have received copies of those contracts. Does any of the members of the board have questions on those contracts?
I do not.
Not at this time, no?
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion that the, we vote to sign these firefighters' union, firefighters' union contract, police union contract, and laborers' union contract.
So moved.
Second the motion.
No.
Discussion.
The only thing I'd like to say is that I do know that we had already approved the memorandum of understanding, so for anyone at home watching is saying, I thought this was already done. This is just the formal formal part.
The memo of understanding, Leah, as you know, really outlines the conditions of the agreement, and then we incorporate all the changes and all the language into the contracts.
Yep, yep. So this is the final, the final part here for anyone paying attention at home.
All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, aye.
The camera, aye. Okay. Next is review the request from the agricultural commission to place the right to farm bylaw submitted previously on the next scheduled special or annual town meeting. I actually had the opportunity to talk to one of the members today, and I explained to him that we didn't want to put it on the special town meeting coming up because, first of all, there has to be a public hearing on that, and there's not enough time between now and November thirtieth. We go ahead with the special town meeting to put this on, so he, he understood, and this is only one member, you know, he understood that the annual town meeting was fine, so, just so you know.
I, yeah, I just feel bad because I know they've been waiting a little while. There was a glitch and we couldn't put it on last year's annual, so.
Yeah, I also look forward to getting it on. One thing I would say is when they do the public hearing, just making sure it's a good education for everybody on what the bylaw actually means. My understanding is it is for properties whose primary use is farming. So my residential parcel wouldn't be protected, so to say. So just making sure that we get out, get the proper information out to everybody before they make a choice.
I explained that to him as well. I said personally, I, I haven't seen the bylaw, so I don't understand the bylaw either, and I think we need to educate the public, just like you said.
Yeah, well, there's also a part in there in the bylaw that says something about, you know, there could possibly be slow-moving farm vehicles on the roads and you know, so there's definitely some, you know, language in there that everyone should read, but.
Okay. I guess we don't have to vote on this now because we, the warrant isn't open for the annual town meeting, so we can't do that, so, okay. All right, number fourteen is a request from the billing commission to appoint Gail Joseph as the assistant board of health agent. Attached is her, her information. We the existing board of health agent, Derek Macedo, is unavailable for an undetermined amount of time. So Ms. Joseph will cover her duties when unnecessary burden on our full-time health agents, so. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Gail Joseph to the assistant board of health agent expire on July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one at a rate of thirty-five dollars an hour.
So moved.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
EB and I.
Day, aye.
The camera, aye. Okay, the agricultural commission has a vacancy for full member. They're requesting that Paul Hunt remove from associate member to a full member. And we have a letter from Paul Hunt asking to be put on as a full member. So I'll entertain a motion to appoint Paul Hunt as a full-time agricultural commission member to expire on July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
So being moved from an associate member to fill the full member vacancy, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so moved.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
EB and I.
Day, aye.
The camera, aye. Number seventeen is review and vote to approve the board of selectmen's minutes meetings of August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty.
You skipped one for the police officer.
Thank you for reminding me, excuse me. Number, number sixteen, request from the police chief to reappoint Alexander Mello Weston Fazio Darrell Makovich, thank you, as police officer slash constable for terms to expire on July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
EB and I.
Day, aye.
The camera, aye. Okay, number seventeen, review and vote to approve the board of selectmen's meetings minutes of August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, September ninth, two thousand and twenty, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, and October fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Mr. Chair, we'll have to split this up into two as I was not present for September twenty-eighth.
Thanks a lot.
So I will make a motion that I will make a motion that we accept September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Second that motion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Baby and I.
The camera, aye.
I abstain.
Okay, and I will make a motion that we accept the minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty, September ninth, twenty twenty, September fourteenth, twenty twenty, September eighteenth, twenty twenty, and October fifth, twenty twenty.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
EB and I.
Day, aye.
Excuse me, the camera, aye. Just so you know, you know, we do have a group of executive minutes to be approved, but we can't approve it until we have an executive session, so we might want to put an executive session on the next agenda so we can approve those minutes. Okay, just so the board knows.
All right.
Okay, new business. Okay. This one's back at us again. Vote, vote to approve and sign the grant of, grant of easements for Satakeet Trail and to sign application plan for Satakeet Trail now. Why, this wasn't done months ago, I don't know. But anyways, so with the, make a motion to to approve and sign the grant of easements for Stuckett Trail and to sign street acceptance plan for Satakeet Trail.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
EB and I.
Okay.
Day, aye.
The next thing on the agenda is we certainly sad to see a longtime treasurer collector retire, but she knows it's time to do it, so. Wish her the best of luck.
Yes, she's counting on days.
So what we want to do is we want to sign a proclamation for early time, so. So I don't have to read this twice. Does somebody want to read this? Read it, then you go, you want to make this motion? Do you have it, Leah?
I don't have it.
Thanks a lot.
I've got it up on my screen.
Okay.
Would I basically just read the whole page, Tracy?
Just read the whole thing because I don't want to have to read it twice.
Hold, hold on a second.
That's funny.
All right, here we go. Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts proclamation. Whereas Deborah Kenny has been a resident of the town of Lakeville for thirty-seven years, and whereas Deborah Kenny began her career serving the residents of Lakeville working in the treasurer tax collector's office in nineteen ninety-four, and whereas Deborah Kenny was promoted to payroll processor in nineteen ninety-eight, and whereas in two thousand, due to the resignation of treasurer tax collector, Deborah Kenny was appointed as the treasurer tax collector and served in that capacity until April of two thousand and one, when she was elected by the residents of Lakeville as treasurer tax collector. And whereas Deborah has been reelected by the residents of Lakeville five times to serve as the town's treasurer tax collector. And whereas, over the years, in her capacity as treasurer tax collector, Deborah has served on the town's technology committee and wage personnel board. And whereas, upon Deborah's retirement, her positive outlook and care and concern for the residents of Lakeville, as well as her friendship and great sense of humor will be missed by all who have had the pleasure of working with her over the years. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the selectmen in the town of Lakeville, Massachusetts do hereby proclaim November second, twenty twenty, as Deborah Kenny Day, and wish to express our sincere appreciation to Deborah for her loyalty and hard work for the citizens of Lakeville, and wish her much happiness as she begins this new chapter of life. On behalf of the board of selectmen and the citizens of Lakeville, this resolution is signed, sealed, and delivered on this nineteenth day of October in the year of two thousand and twenty.
Nice, nice work.
You want to second that motion, Leah?
Yes, I second that.
Any discussion?
I mean, what can we say? I mean, that's an amazing, amazing career. So, thank you, Doug.
Okay, so all those in favor?
EB and I.
Day, aye.
The camera, aye. All right. Okay, before I go on to oh, any other new business?
I've got one thing, Mr. Chair. It may have been better under announcements, but Leah mentioned it earlier tonight, and it kind of sparked a memory in my head, so we did have an issue over the fifteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth with some internet service in town, and one of the things that we saw residents learn was that we have a cable TV advisory committee where Mr. Bob Marshall is the chair. So folks were learning that this is something we have in town that we can utilize when there are problems with cable services in town. And Mr. Marshall was very helpful in getting that situation resolved, but also would like to remind all the residents that if you do have problems with providers, it is very important to keep diaries of what was wrong, when it was fixed, what you went through to get it fixed, what your experience was like with the providers, and then relay that information to the cable TV advisory committee so that when they sit down with these companies to go through their license negotiations every few years, they have that information available to go through the, the process. So I just want to throw that out there. That is one of the committees that is on the town's webpage. And they do a lot of stuff behind the scenes that most of the residents probably don't realize, so thank you to Chairman Marshall for your help, and be sure to send them any information you have, positive or negative experiences.
Okay, anybody else got any other new business? Just so the board knows, as you probably see from this meeting, we have a bunch of stuff that needs to be signed, so we need to give Tracy a little time to get that together. But would like to get it probably signed at the end of the day, if that's okay with you, Tracy?
Yeah, I have, all the appointment forms are done. But I have a lot, the contracts are done, so, yeah, I mean, I should be ready by the end of the day.
Okay, so I would appreciate it if the board could get, because we have some things that we need to get to certain people. Okay, thank you.
I'm around, just let me know when you're ready.
Okay, if you, you tell them, Trace, then?
Yes, I will send an email out to everybody, letting them know when they're ready to come in.
Okay. Our old business update on the former Lakeville hospital, we had the preliminary forty-three D meeting last Wednesday. So they will be putting together their plans and hopefully the application, if everything falls in place, would be approved by the committee on April twenty-eighth, October twenty-eighth. And then they would go ahead with the formal process as you normally do with any project having to do with hearings with the planning board and hearings with the board of health and conservation and so forth, so that's just kind of where we are. Okay, I, I had discussed the fiscal twenty-one budget and capital plan. I met with Todd, the town accountant, and he's in the process of putting together what he thinks we need to do and the transfers that we need to do for the fiscal twenty-one budget, so I would say we'd have that, we definitely would have that by the next meeting. And then the capital plan, the, the the things that are being, you know, proposed, the things that we did not do, you know, at the annual town meeting, except potentially for the two things. One is the thing we have to discuss, the radios. And it's funny that Tom And it's funny that Tom O'Brien, you know, talked about software. To do fire permits and so forth, because we haven't let anybody in the fire department, so. If this software would allow them to do it remotely, so that I think this is something that could be reimbursed. You know, with from the Kears Act, and then of course the radios, and one of the things that. Was was gonna be voted on at the, at the fall town meeting. Was that we were gonna purchase a moa. For the park department, which was twenty-two thousand dollars, so. Other than that, it's about two hundred thousand dollars altogether, and once again, we'll. Get that information to get available for the board to review. Okay, any other old business?
To the capital plan, should we be inviting the capital plan committee members to the meeting when you're gonna discuss it?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Thank you. These have already been approved by the capital plan. These are already.
Okay.
And these aren't new items on the capital. We're gonna let them know, Tracy, don't worry.
Yeah, since they're new, they might wanna just sit in.
That's fine, but not yet. Brian.
I was just gonna ask, has Todd heard any rumors on when free cash might be certified? I know.
Has been certified, or you went forward with that email?
If I did, I have forgotten already.
Yes.
That's great.
We got it last week and it's. One point five million dollars, almost one point six million dollars.
Great.
The transfer station was just over two hundred thousand dollars of retained earnings. The park commission is only sixty-nine thousand dollars, so that's a concern. Well, you just reminded me of that. The park commission's got a problem and they're not, they're certainly not bringing any revenue in, you know, and so we're gonna have to look at that budget. And we're probably gonna have to supplement a little of that budget. For them to get through. This fiscal year, so Todd is reviewing that as well, and I've gotta call Scott. Holmes, the chairman of the park commission to. Talk about it because we just can't leave him hanging out there.
Yeah, I was speaking with him the other day, Mister Chair, and I told him to be expecting your call.
Oh, thanks. I was gonna look for that. I'm sorry, Brian, I thought, did you, were you forwarded that email, Leah?
I'm looking, but.
Free cash?
Yeah, I'm looking for it, but I can't seem to.
I'll forward it to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's what, that's what Scott and we were talking about, and he's like, you know, we have, and I said, yeah, we're, it's on our, definitely on our radar. Definitely on Todd's radar, the finances with the park commission. So I told him that if he doesn't hear from you soon, or Todd, that he should be giving you a call, but. He, he just sit down, so.
The transfer station is fine. Transfer station is good. The expenses are good and the revenue's coming in for the transfer station are fine, so they won't have a problem.
Good to hear.
Okay, anything, any other old business? Okay, anything else I wanna need to run in front of the board? Okay. So I'm trying to cut down the times of these meetings here. I know it's over two hours, but we had a lot on the agenda tonight. Because if Tom O'Brien didn't talk so long, you know.
That's all right. I like Tom O'Brien.
I'm only kidding.
You know. I think he does a good job and I think that, you know, the care's money is, it's just everyone's trying to follow the rules, but. We're trying to do what we can for our community too, so. You know, anyways.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
EB and I.
Day I.
The camera eye. Well, thank you, everybody, and good night. I hope you get a good night's sleep tonight, Brian.